All right, everybody. It's 6:30 PM. I call this regular meeting of the Littleton City Council for January 17th, 2023 to order. I have a gavel. This is from my brother, who has asked me if I have used it. So Russ, I used it. Thank you. Clerk, could we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Pro Tem Ryden.
I am here.
Thank you. I heard Councilmember Barr.
Also here.
Councilmember Grove.
Here.
Councilmember Valdez. Councilmember Milliman.
See, yes.
Councilmember Driscoll.
Here.
And Mayor Schlatter is absent. We do have a quorum.
Fantastic. If we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, face the flag. All right, let's take a look at the agenda. We're actually going to pull Consent Agenda Item 8B. It'll be put back on the agenda at a point in the future. But any other councilmembers have any changes they want to make tonight? Excellent, then the agenda is approve, approved. We're going to do some reports next. So, City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Ryden. I have three things tonight for the council. Good evening, council. First of all, just a little update on our authorities, boards, and committees recruitment process for both the council and the public who might be listening and interested particularly. We currently have 40 positions on our authorities, boards, and commissions that we're trying to fill. Many of those will hopefully have returning members applying. But at this point, we have 18 that have been received. So there's still a ways to go. We, the deadline as a reminder is January 31st. We have decided to extend that deadline from 5:00 PM to midnight on the 31st. We've heard that that might help, and we're wondering if that 5:00 PM might be a relic of days we didn't do as much online. So we think the midnight deadline is certainly reasonable there, and we're just wanting to encourage the council to talk to friends. And if there are people watching who might be interested, certainly check the website, look for authorities, boards, and commissions, and you'll find the application there. Second item for me tonight is an advertisement also. On behalf of South Metro Fire and Rescue, they're in the process of filling a vacancy for District 4 that represents the area generally from Broadway to Wadsworth on the South Metro Fire Board. This will be a short assignment unless the person also runs for the seat because per their bylaws, a role like this, individual like this, will serve until the next election, which is May 2nd. But they are trying to fill that spot. So if anyone is interested, or if you know anyone who might be, they should submit their resume, other details that can be found by calling South Metro Fire Rescue, specifically Mike De La Fano, who is the Chief Government Affairs Officer, who can give them all information that they might need. Finally, I'm sure council is aware of the pending snowstorm. We're expecting, you know, I feel like the meteorologists who don't know really, six to 12 inches, we don't know for sure. If it's on the six side, it's certainly more manageable than the 12 side. But as the day wore on today, we were seeing more and more that we really could be in for some significant snow, with much of that coming in the early morning hours and even the commute. So to do our own part of trying to encourage folks to stay off the roads if you can, we have decided to delay the start or the opening for city services tomorrow from 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM. I'll be huddling up with our police and our Public Works very early in the morning to evaluate conditions then, and the updated forecast, and we'll be able to make any further calls then. But delayed start, 10:00 AM tomorrow, that's on the website. And after all of that, Mayor Pro Tem, that's all I have.
All right, thank you. City Attorney?
No report, thank you.
All right, excellent. City Councilmember reports. Councilmember Grove, why don't you start us off?
Okay, a couple things. Thank you. Couple things. On January 9th, I went to the swearing-in of the county commissioners, plus a couple of the other elected officials, and that included Jessica Campbell Swanson, Leslie Sumney, as well as the Assessor, Clerk Recorder, Coroner, Sheriff, and Treasurer. There was quite a few hundred people there, and everybody got to say a little something. And we had a couple staff members that were there, Kathleen Osher and Kelly Nardi. And then they had a nice reception. So it was interesting to hear from these county commissioners, and they're dealing with a lot of the same things we are at the local level, housing, affordable housing, water resources, transportation, sustainability, growth and population, and the new health department, just to name a few things. Second thing I wanted to mention is South Suburban has completed their master plan, and this is for the next five years. And anybody that's listening that's interested in a presentation, there'll be a study session at South Suburban over on, what is it, Colorado and County Line at February 8th at 6:00. There is no opportunity to speak at that event, but you can write in afterwards. It won't be adopted until April, so there's plenty of time for more public comment. And then the last thing I wanted to mention, I went to a BEGA Sister City meeting, and the BEGA group is gearing up for the BEGA delegation to come in, and they will be here August 10th through 20th. And there'll be a lot of activities, and they can go to a lot of welcome, Western welcome activities. One thing I wanted to mention to council was Thursday, August 17th is a civic dinner, which council will be invited to, and it'd be really great if we had a nice showing. They had a lot of their civic leaders when we were there, so if you can think about coming to that event, and more details to come, but just wanted to give you a heads up. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Barr?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. So I've got a couple of quick announcements. The Next Generation Advisory Committee did not meet this month in January, but will be meeting in February and resuming that schedule until the new, you know, the new committee is seated. I wanted to put out there as well that I'm going to hold another District 3 roundtable at 10:00 AM at Bemis Library on January 28th, which is a Saturday. During that session, it'll be for one hour, and I'd like to kind of facilitate a discussion amongst the participants on what they would like to see in council's upcoming work planning session. So we'll kind of walk through what is currently in the city's work plan, what are some of the goals and objectives that we have, and get input back from community members as to how they want to see other goals, metrics, activities within those groups. So that's January 28th, Saturday at 10:00 AM, and the downstairs meeting room at the Bemis Library. Some news from the Denver Regional Council of Governments. We're going to be holding our meeting virtually tomorrow night, not in person due to the weather. Everyone is always free to watch in on the Dr. Cog meetings as they can participate virtually and provide comment over the phone. We are going to be looking at the new executive committee representation and making nominations and approving that, as well as talking about some other action items regarding the tip process, the transportation improvement planning process scheduled for this upcoming year. Finally, for Littleton Public Schools, I just want to mention as well that February 22nd, there are going to be finalist interviews. Three community committees are going to be interviewing the finalists for the superintendent position for Littleton Public Schools. Those community committees are going to be providing recommendations to the LPS board as to the superintendent candidates that they prefer, and you can watch that meeting live through Littleton Public Schools' website. So I'd encourage you all to just, if you can't participate, by providing comments, to at least take a look and see what the interviews are like and how the panelists are kind of, you know, answering questions, and are they talking about the things you care about. I will also say too that I just refreshed the Littleton Public Schools' website, and it does look like all LPS schools are closed and activities canceled for tomorrow, Wednesday, January 18th. All school-sponsored activities are also canceled or rescheduled. Please keep an eye on the LPS school website, but this just pertains for tomorrow, Wednesday. It is not a late start, it is a cancellation of all the activities. So that's all I've got.
Excellent. Councilmember Valdez?
Thank you. Regarding the snow, it snows in Colorado, as we know, Jim. And I'm always amazed, as someone who grew up here, I'm always amazed at all the shutdowns we have these days. We didn't used to do that. We used to actually drive into snow, but now we're, everybody's afraid to drive into snow. So I get a laugh out of that. Since the chief is here, I'll have to mention Chief Stevens. I had a chance to see some of your officers in action the other day, Monday, I guess it was. And it was a difficult situation, and I saw the way they handle it. You wouldn't even have known the police officers had a difficult situation. They were able to deal with it in a way that it was smooth, and everybody walked away, and I believe happy. So kudos to your staff. Also, I had a chance to review some videos of some folks that were videoing some of our city staff near the police station. And I want to give kudos to your clerk at the front window there where they go to get, people go to get records, as well as our city clerk. She too was confronted and responded in such an appropriate way that where things could have gone south real quick, but because of the way you and others responded, it makes me really proud that you guys did that. So that was, that's all I have. Thank you.
Councilmember Milliman?
Hi. So only one little report. So Jim, our City Manager Jim Becklinburg, joined the Housing Task Force on January 9th. It was a Zoom meeting or a Teams meeting, but it was nice for him to join that group, to introduce himself, and hear about what the Housing Task Force has been doing since they were first formed, and what their, with the upcoming goals they're going to be working on for 2023. I'm just super proud of this group. They've done an amazing amount of work, really was highly influential in helping to pass the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance, and they are going to have a lot to say this coming year with changes potentially to the code, talking about missing middle, really working on ways to increase a diverse housing stock here in the city of Littleton. So thank you so much for attending that meeting. It was really, really important, I think, that you were there, and I know that they appreciated it. And then I want to say kudos to the entire, our entire city staff. It's 2023, and we should be so proud of everybody that works for the city of Littleton, the amount of work that you have to handle with the staff that you have, as we have a growing city. I'm still just incredibly impressed and inspired by...
With the staff we have?
With the staff that we have.
Even with?
Even with the staff that we have. So yes, kudos to Littleton Police Department. I know they had a difficult situation last week, and I'm so proud of our police department and very thankful that they're here to protect us and serve us. And then also Keith is not here tonight, but I know his staff is going to be really, really working hard over the next 24 to 48 hours to help clear the streets again. And you're right, yes, it does snow in Colorado, and it's actually nine to 13 inches is what I heard. Yeah, that's it.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Yes, I attended the Historic Downtown Littleton Merchants Meeting several weeks ago, and by all indications, they had a successful holiday season, so thank you for shopping locally. Excited about Black House opening up. They're scheduled for early March, and the Denver Brewery, again, somewhere probably March, April, somewhere in there is what I'm hearing. Littleton Business Chamber hired a director, Cory Lumdoc, so we're excited to have Cory on board. Littleton Business Chamber will be having a Zoom meeting tomorrow at 9:00, so anybody who wants to join in on that is welcome. And then the Downtown Development Authority had their first meeting. We didn't get through some of the nominations, through any of the nominations, and we're going to be looking to do that tomorrow afternoon. That meeting is still, at this point, scheduled in person, but I think there's also a Zoom link there that will be going out for those people that don't want to fight the weather. So we're looking forward to all three organizations really adding a much-needed punch into our economics and into our, and into our business group out there with Cindy leading the way from the city, so really appreciative of all her work and her team. So that's the update from those three associations.
Excellent. Thank you, everybody. I also met last week with the Littleton Arts and Culture Committee or Commission, and they've agreed on a proposal for the lodgers tax revenue. They're hoping to present that recommendation to council in the weeks to come. It'll include a breakdown formula, as well as a fund and a grant system to kind of monitor the money. So that's coming on the horizon. And then hopefully there'll be a picture that'll be put up for everyone to see. This is the winner of the Gingerbread House Contest from the end of last year, maybe?
Maybe.
Maybe?
One night. (laughing). Gingerbread at night.
Yeah, gingerbread at night, yes. Well, the house that won was entitled Casa del Dolce, House of Sweets, and it's by the Figueroa Gomez family. And this is a competition that's held, it's been held the last several years, and you know, there's two sets in the library, or two shifts, and there ends up being about 20 different competitions. And then for the course of two, three weeks, folks vote on it who come into the library. So that's what won. Nothing?
(inaudible).
It's a really cool house, and next year I really hope that we can have it on display, not this house, but the winner next year on display, or some of the other houses on display in the city center, because they're really cool and creative. I know, drumroll, right? Took a page from your book, Kelly, and had a picture. That was really cool.
There's some good ones.
Yeah, did you take your grandson to see it? Yeah? Yeah. Thank you. Okay, well, I want to make sure they're recognized.
We're not worried about that dreadful snow, so. Littleton always cancels, I mean, Littleton always canceled, Greenwood never canceled. It's totally nuts.
There's more people now, too. It gets more precious.
Well, as a former school child, we loved having school canceled.
I'm sorry, it's not showing the second display.
Bring it back.
Exactly. There you go.
Okay, it's not showing. Okay, well, not only was there that picture, but there were two other pictures I actually also wanted to show, and since we've been talking about the snow, one is a picture of a gentleman in a wheelchair who, from the last snowfall we had at the very beginning of the year, or the end of last year, beginning of this year, who couldn't be on the sidewalk. And so he's on Littleton Boulevard in his wheelchair. The second picture is of most presumably someone who is blind, who has a cane walking stick at the corner on an intersection of Littleton Boulevard and Gallup. And the walk that they're in, the crosswalk, is covered in ice and snow, and uneven ice and snow. And so as we go into another, another snowfall, which will continue, I really want to make sure that we are watching out for these folks and these needs. We heard a lot from our citizens struggling with their cars and, you know, snowplows and things not being paved, but what about the folks who are using their feet or using their wheelchairs or strollers to go about our city? We need to make sure that we're watching out for them, and that's part of, when we talk about equity, what we mean by that. I think there's a lot, and I'd love to hear more from the city about code enforcement and what we can do to incentivize folks to make sure that businesses, as well as people who have homes and apartment complexes, are shoveling those walkways and salting them appropriately so that we can ensure the safety of our citizenship. And what is the process for reporting that and citing those? Also, I think we heard a lot about pavement last week, more than a social worker like myself ever needs to know. But as we think of like aging, not only aging sidewalks, you know, we see a lot of that on Littleton Boulevard and other areas of our community, so I hope our Transportation Mobility Board maybe has us on their radar, as well as the city, of what is the repair strategy for some of those sidewalks, because these are the folks who are at risk. So that's going to be all for me today. Thanks for trying. Thanks for trying.
Try one more time.
It's okay. Technology happens. We have no scheduled appearances for tonight. We also have no proclamations to present tonight, so then we'll move straight into public comment. So public comment is an opportunity to express opinions or ask questions regarding issues that are not a part of public hearings that are on tonight's agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes, and there'll be a timer on the board. The city council is not authorized under the Colorado Open Meetings Law to discuss, comment, or take action at this meeting on any issues raised by public comment that is not a part of tonight's agenda. I, the mayor pro tem, I can refer the matter to the city manager or to the city attorney for immediate comments after public comment, or to staff to attain additional information and report back to the council as appropriate. Of course, we expect comments to be civil, disrespectful, or disruptive behaviors will not be tolerated. So with that, I've got this lovely little green sheet, and anyone who didn't sign up, you're, will be welcome to come forward later. But Robert Walker, would you like to have your day in front of, yeah, come on up to the, speaking the microphone? I told you, it's really fancy, right?
Good evening. My name's Robert Walker. I am the new owner of Waquito's Mexican Restaurant situated at 5826 South Lowell Boulevard, the former Chubby's number 14. I had purchased and closed on the property on 10/24 and had intended on opening on November 14th. I had to have all of my licensure in place, from sales tax to use tax, to my tri-county health department, per the SBA requirements, to even go to the loan closing table. When I take possession of the property on the 24th, basically receive this and a piece of set, and a set of keys. I didn't receive any employee files, any vendor files, or anything of the like that one would expect to receive when purchasing a business through an asset purchase agreement. I took on a monumental task to open on November 14th, and I have been servicing the business electrically, miscellaneous repairs over the last 15 years, and had my eye on the property since. I purchased it from my neighbor. When I get in to clean the property, I determined, even after doing an inspection on the property, that the equipment was failing after the employees informed me of that. So I needed to replace the equipment, which in turn necessitated an upsized gas line, which I tried to pull a permit with the building, community building department. And I was informed as a result of me doing several trades that drives the tenant finish improvement permit. I explained the electrical repairs that was being done on the property is general maintenance, as I'm a master electrician, and I've been in business for 15 years, and they keep referring back to doing two trades that drives the tenant improvement process, which means I needed to have a licensed professional architect to create drawings so I could submit to building planning review and South Metro. I've reached out to an architect, and he came and checked the building. I said, "You don't really need my services. You're not tearing walls down, you're not adding walls, and the existing system is in place, and you need to go back to the city and explain your situation." And I've been trying to do that since November 14th. I've lost my employees that I had procured, the existing employees that were there on hand, eight employees, I can't retain them because I can't open the door. I'm looking at, on November 14th, I have a meeting with the planning review and was notified that there was no CO certificate of occupancy on place in the building for the last 20 years of operation. I'm running out of time, and I'm nervous, so I'm sorry, I got a couple.
You're doing great.
The Colorado College for the Blind is right across the street, and I have a huge support for them, and they have support for me. And on the last snowstorm, my sidewalks were absolutely hammered, so I had my ATV shortly a week after I had a surgery, and I got to my property to clear my sidewalks for them.
All right, Mr. Walker, that's time. Thank you for that, and thank you for doing the sidewalks.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes.
I can just offer that I was fortunate to be able to speak with Mr. Walker late this afternoon and was able to gather, gather a lot of the background. And I did say that I would, would speak to our chief building official tomorrow. I think the help that he needs is just some focused, you know, help in, with that path forward that works for the city and for his, his, his business. So while we certainly can't intervene on, on the building code itself, we'll certainly be getting him as, as much help as we can in having a kind of clear message or a clear path for what needs to be done to be able to get his business open, because that's not only in his interest, but in the city's as well. So that's some status for you.
Thank you. Ms. Chadbourne?
Good evening, council. My name is Pam Chadbourne, a little block ahead from here. So first, I'm just going to say Black House, I think gets good reviews in Denver. I think this is another center, but I miss Hanson's. And I regard Hanson's as real downtown Littleton, and it's gone. I'm going to also mention that our city calendar does not show your retreat. And it should be on February 10th and 11th now, so people who go to the calendar will see it and pay attention and know about it. My understanding, I heard through the grapevine, that location is still unknown. But you know, there's an easy way to handle that. Location TBD, check back by and give a date by which the location will be set. And my theme here is about the city's connection to the people and the people's ability to give input to the city, and I think there are problems with that, and this is that in a tiny instance, but a very important one. And so a second instance of this is the Planning Commission meeting, at which the appeals process was considered. It's pulled, but Jason Reynolds, a commissioner, brought up that the Board of Appeals in many jurisdictions, maybe most, is usually appealed within the city first to council and then goes to courts. And you know what? The Planning Commission didn't even respond to that. They didn't even pick up on it. And our old code did that, too. And that was a huge advantage, and I'm going to say with the new ULCE and a new zoning map, the first thing the city should want to do is to bring it to you so that the public process can be aware of what, maybe there's an issue with the code, maybe there's an issue with the zoning map. Let's learn about that within the city first and not tell people they have to go to District Court. So I found that process deficient, defective, non-responsive to something that could have been handled locally and was in the old city and is not anymore. A failure. Now, in my opinion, my third issue is with the study session next week, and my understanding is that staff will ask you for your decision. Now, new information will be presented, and that may be to you, and that's fine, but we, the public, get it too and for your information. There's a long history here of dispute about the finances, including Doug Clark, a former mayor who knew the finances better than anybody I've seen engage with the city. And we deserve a chance to resolve that. And so to have a study session and not leave time for us to engage you and the staff with issues about the facts and the data and then give you our opinion, that also shuts us out.
Thank you, Pam.
Please consider these issues. Thank you very much.
And city manager, did you want to speak to some of those things, maybe the calendar?
Yes, I think there are a couple of things. First of all, it is a good opportunity for the public, and I know this, this will be on the city's website, that the council is planning to have a, to have a retreat that's open to the public, scheduled for, for February 10th and 11th, and that will be held at the courtyard by Marriott here in, in Littleton. So that's the updated there, and that will be on the city's website.
It's currently on the tentative calendar right now.
Thank you, Reed. One, I think, one, one other point I can speak to. I believe Ms. Chadbourne was speaking about the study session planned for Geneva Village, and we will be seeking council direction, but that direction that we're thinking of, of seeking is as much about kind of process forward as it is about the, the long-term options themselves. So we will be anticipating or trying to facilitate conversation about when council would like to make decisions, as much as what those will be. So we're, we're trying to anticipate many of the, the interests that the speaker outlined.
Excellent, thank you. Is there anyone else who did not sign up who would wish to speak? All right, come forward. Just, we'll have you state your name and maybe where you live, and then you can see the little clock up there.
Yes. Hi. Hi, my name is Andrew Allen. I live in 5625 South Sycamore Street. So we're in Sycamore Gardens in downtown Littleton. I just kind of wanted to comment and see if anything is potentially being done. I know in Boulder about a month ago, and now more recently in Englewood, there was traces of methamphetamines found in public libraries. They had to shut down and completely clean those libraries, and I was wondering, is like Littleton, the city, doing anything to, to test in our libraries or see if that's an issue that we're facing here? So I like, like to go to the Bemis Public Library, and I was like, now I'm a little more concerned for my safety, and I was wondering if there's anything being done about that. That was just the only comment I had.
Excellent. Yes, we can speak to that, city manager.
Yes, while we, I'll, I'll preface this sentence, while we have had no evidence of illegal drug use in our, our library, just out of an abundance of caution, we did contract for, for testing late, late last week, given the, the proximity of, of Englewood and their, their situation there. We are expecting to hear the, the results of those tests, if not tomorrow, the next day, and we'll be, we'll be passed that along to council, and we'll have some kind of notice available at the library for patrons there so that they will, you know, certainly if there is the, the result that no one wants, we will have to remed, have to remedy that situation very quickly. That could, could require temporary closures, but we're hopeful that we'll have some kind of notice that just lets the public know that we did conduct that testing and what those, what those results are.
Excellent, thank you. And thank you, Andrew, for raising that and caring about the safety of all who visit the Bemis Library. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right, with that? With that, we are on? Oh, city attorney, did you have any comments?
No, thank you, mayor. Protem?
All right, we are on Agenda Item 8, the consent agenda. So consent agenda items can be adopted by a simple motion. All ordinance must be read by title prior to a vote on the motion, and any consent agenda item may be removed at the request of any council member. So with that, we have ordinance A, Ordinance 01-2023, and ordinance on first reading, amending Ordinance 23 Series 2022, known as the Annual Appropriation Bill for Municipal Purposes of the City of Littleton, Counties of Arapahoe, Douglas, and Jefferson, State of Colorado, for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2023, and ending December 31st, 2023. C, Resolutions 01-2023, approving designation of where notices of public meetings are posted and identifying the newspaper where notices and other information required to be published will be printed. Item D, Resolution 04-2023, approving an intergovernmental agreement, IGA, between the City of Littleton and Arapahoe County for the provision of emergency management services to the City of Littleton by the Arapahoe County Office of Emergency Management. Item E, Resolution 07-2023, approving an intergovernmental agreement, IGA, between the City of Littleton and the State of Colorado, Department of Higher Education, State Board for Community Colleges, and Occupational Education by and through Arapahoe Community College, ACC, their police department, for the provision of law enforcement services on and around ACC campuses. And item F, ID number 22-298, a motion to approve minutes of the December 20th, 2022 regular meeting of city council. Can I get a motion?
Mayor Protem?
I move to approve ordinance A, C, D, E, and F.
Second.
Excellent, thank-
E and F.
Second.
Excellent, thank you.
We polled B, right?
Okay, I am going to open voting.
Excuse me, Mayor Protem, who is our second?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, here comes the true test. The button pusher, yes. Is that open? Did I do it wrong?
All right, where are we?
I did that.
Okay.
Didn't you go back?
Let's just start over.
Okay.
Go to meetings. There we go.
Got it, okay.
Go ahead and hit it, agenda. See what happens. Oh, I want to hit down here. God, I forgot how it goes down. See what happens. We can do an audio one, too.
No, I can do this. I can do this.
I don't remember how to do it, actually.
It has deactivate written on it instead of activate, so I'm not sure how to get back to that screen. All right, would we all be okay with that?
You want to do that?
Can we do a verbal, verbal call?
Or just?
All right, thumbs up. All right, if you agree, thumbs up. If you don't consent, thumbs down.
The vote is six in favor. The motion carries unanimously.
That's embarrassing. With, with, yeah, we have no general business tonight. We also have no ordinances on second reading and no public hearings tonight. So with no other business, we're adjourned at 7:06. Russ, this is for you. We are adjourned.